...in a contract that covers the period of July 1, 2018 through June 30th of 2023. Going into negotiations, our number one priority by the council was health insurance and really looking at the plan design as a top priority. Overall, I believe this is a very, very fair agreement and places the city in a very good long-term position regarding health insurance and those really health insurance premiums. Specifically, the group health insurance plan will remain the same through June 30th of 2019. Our current plan has a design of a $500 single, $1,000 family deductible with 2080 co-insurance after that, up to a maximum out-of-pocket of $1,000 single, $2,000 family with various prescription copays and office copays. Starting July 1st of 2019, under this agreement, the city council will have the ability to annually set the health insurance program design as long as it follows the program design for other employee groups. So this, this language really does give us a lot of flexibility under the collective bargaining changes that occurred last year and really sets us up when the public works union goes up for negotiation and health insurance is actually an item that has to come out of their agreement to set a plan design for all groups and similar moving forward. A few other changes to the contract, there was very few changes overall. Within the area footwear, the current contract allowed a $150 summer shoe stipend and a $150 winter boot stipend. Under the new contract, it just combines them all together for $300 total stipend for footwear. Comp time, currently employees are allowed to have a maximum accumulation of 40 hours at any given time in their comp time bank. Now they can go up to 60 hours, but then each year with the last paycheck in June, that will then get drawn down to 40 hours. So we're not carrying a liability going on year to year. This additionally, shift differential, currently our contract provides no shift differential. Now, under this new contract, employees regularly assigned to the first shift or the overnight shift, they'll receive an additional 20 cents per hour. Regarding K-9 pay, currently the contract has no language regarding K-9 pay. Our current city policy under the new contract will be implemented and inserted in the contract. And finally, dues check off. Currently, the contract allows union dues to be deducted from employee paycheck and then the city would remit them to the union directly. Under the new revised changes under Iowa Code Chapter 20, that has to be removed. So that language was removed in this contract. Wages, so it is a five-year contract. In the first year, on July 1, 2018, wages will increase 3.5%. And then on July 1, annually after that, for the next four years, it'll increase by 3% annually. I do think overall, especially in light of the health insurance changes, I recommend that the council adopt a resolution approving the police union contract beginning July 1, 2018 and concluding on June 30th of 2023.
You just said July 1, 2018. You said 3.5. I got 2.5 here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess so, too.
You said 3.5 there.
I'm sorry. I apologize. It is 2.5. You're correct. I misspoke if I said 3.5. It is 2.5.
Okay.
And that matches our other employee, the public works, and then what's being recommended later tonight for our non-union. Thank you for that. That is correct. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
And this one for five years, right?
It is a five-year contract, I guess.
We had normally been three.
The last two contracts have been three. We did have a five-year contract a number of years ago.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? If not, I need a motion to approve the police union contract beginning July 1, 2018 and concluding June 20th, 2023.
30th.
June 30th and authorize the mayor, city manager, and chief police to sign the agreement. So move.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Fleischer?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. The next item is the fiscal year 2018-2019 salary resolution. And Mike?
Excellent.
Who was it, Laura?
Turned over to Laura at this point.
Laura, yep. Sorry. My fault.
Thank you. So this is our annual salary resolution that we put together each year that would adjust top of pay. It was prepared under the assumptions or under the requirements from the police union contract that was just approved by you for increases to the police officer salary by 2.5%. And then the public works union contract, which is already in place, and we have one more year on that contract where wages are to be increased 2.5% as well. And then all the other non-representative positions, or what we call our non-union, are being proposed here to be increased by 2.5% as well. Also in our salary resolution, we have our number of part-time positions that we hire for and a range so that it gives the city a little bit of flexibility in hiring within that range. If we're hiring somebody for the first year versus somebody who's been working for us for two or three years, we get a range to work within. One other area I'd like to point out is we are going to start hiring officials, referees, and umpires for our different leisure services programs. This has not been on here before, so we'd like to include this on here that we typically, I think we have been paying up to $25 per game or per night. This will just give us some flexibility on depending on which type of official is hired and how we work with the, with the part-time employees on how we pay them. And this would become, that part of this would become effective immediately so that we can start paying our umpires for our 2018 softball baseball season, which starts games next week. Are there any questions on how the salary resolution was prepared?
How will you decide up to $25 per game? Do you? Or is that stuff?
Usually what that is, it'd be a seventh, eighth game, home plate, and if you've worked the second or third game that night.
Oh, okay.
There's incentive to stay out there all night.
Okay. Gotcha.
Typically. Got six games, you know, someone on the base might get 15 bucks per game. It's not per hour per game.
You have, you have a system set up for that? Okay.
Did you have a system in writing, just for continuity?
No.
Is there something you guys could do?
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions for Laura?
One for Jack. Do you have these officials sign a contract ahead of time or do they?
No. Now, before, no. They would fill out the necessary forms for tax purposes, but now they will have a lot more information we'll receive from them going forward. But the contract.
So when you call them, you obviously have a list of who's going to be working that night?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, Gary McGee on the baseball field has a list of the umpires. He calls them. He'll keep track. He does a real good job. He's done this several years for us. And then they'll get forwarded to me and they'll make sure it gets entered and paid.
And some of these might be under 18, is that right? The umpires?
Yes. Oh, yeah. A significant amount of them will be under 18. Yeah.
Any other questions? I need a motion to approve the pay range scale for employees beginning July 1, 2018.
So move.
Second. There's a motion in a second. Seaman?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Our fourth item is the fiscal year 2019 city manager annual salary. And gosh, I get to do something this time. City manager Mike Pogie Weaver's employment contract required a performance review in April of 2018. On April 30th, the city council completed that review of the manager and he received an excellent performance evaluation from the council. The terms of the revised employment contract dated May 8, 2017 specifies that upon a satisfactory performance evaluation in April of 2018, the employer agrees to increase the employee annual base salary to 96.8% top of salary on July 1, 2018. And if approved at the May 29 meeting tonight, the top salary is proposed to go to $128,378.44 as of July 1. The following terms of the approved revised employment contract will put the annual salary at $124,273.33 starting July 1. That was all outlined in the agreement. Any questions? If not, I will need a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Seaman?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Our fifth item is the street resurfacing 2018 project, and it is 5:29, and I will open a public hearing. And Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 7, the planned specification form of contract and estimate of cost for the street resurfacing project for this year were filed, prepared by JEO Consulting Group. And briefly summarizing them, they're pretty much the customary items of work in our annual street resurfacing projects. They, this year, propose to be on portions of Bluff Street, East Street, and West Street. We also included in this plan or in this program, the overlay of the high-service pub station parking lot, which has needed it for some time. The specifications are the SUDAS standard specifications with special provisions. Form of contract is the SUDAS sample form, and the estimate of cost is $549,092. Utilizing that estimate of cost, construction costs, the total project cost currently stands at $633,192 plus a little bit of hourly work that we would anticipate needing from JEO Consulting Group. Majority of the inspection, of course, will be performed by city personnel. Funding for the project is included totaling $740,000, and we actually did receive bids for the project this afternoon. So that will be brought to you probably next meeting for your consideration. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend passage and approval of the resolution adopting plans for the street resurfacing 2018 project.
Do you have a scheduled date when you were to start?
Start? No, we don't.
Yeah, nothing? Okay. So do you have that at the next meeting or?
We, we plan on bringing it to the next meeting for your consideration on contract award. Yeah.
Are they going to do them all at the same time or are they going to stagger them? You know?
Well, generally, the way it works, because there's different disciplines that's involved in it, we have storms who are on parts of the streets, and that'll be ongoing. We've got concrete repair on most of the streets. That'll be done by a separate subcontractor or contractor. And then, of course, the asphalt overlay is a different contractor. So they're, in all likelihood, they'll be working all over them, and then the asphalt contractor will come in and systematically finish the surfaces.
Are there any questions from the public for Randy? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 5:32. Any questions in the council? If not, I will need a motion to approve the adoption of the planned specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the street resurfacing project for 2018.
So move. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Seaman?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the alley block 10 original town abandoned tank site free product HVE proposal. And Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The alley located between Main and Park that runs from US 30 to 7 is the site of an abandoned tank. It was formerly a leaking abandoned tank. Seneca Companies was contracted in March of 2016 to perform site assessments and free product recovery, which has been ongoing since that time. Has been, that's required, was required by the DNR. The DNR has now assigned the site, and no action required classification, but they will not issue no further action certification until it, the free product recovery meets the limitations, the thresholds of the Iowa Administrative Code, which they are not met at this time. It's through the past little over a year, the thresholds have consistently been exceeded, and we're in an effort to try to move this site to maybe a quicker closure. We had asked Seneca to provide a proposal to do a high-volume extraction pilot test. And what that does will attempt to accelerate the extraction of free petroleum product from the soil. So they have provided that proposal for that test as well as ongoing seven quarters worth of free product recovery and reporting. Those costs are for the free product, $12,148, and for the high-volume extraction test, $39,870. So in total, for the next seven quarters, the proposal is $16,135.58. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend approving the proposal of Seneca for the free product recovery and the high vacuum extractions for the abandoned tank sites.
Randy, do they give us any degree of confidence that this is going to clean it up over the next almost two years?
They don't make any certifications anyway. They, they recommend this because they have had some success with it. But in this site, you know, every site's different, I'm sure. But it's subject to the amount of free product that's being recovered, plus water that's being recovered. It's a, it's a possible acceleration of the program.
If I understand right, this is actually cheaper than what we're doing right now?
No. No, it isn't. It's actually, right now, free product is being recovered and reported monthly. And that is costing us approximately $560 a month, right in that near ballpark. Now, their, their free product recovery for the next seven quarters is about 3% more than that in this proposal. And then on top of that is the high volume extraction cost. So that's kind of the way the two current and this are related.
But we really weren't getting anywhere before, but now we have a chance to clean it up.
Yeah, it's been pretty consistent exceeding the Iowa Administrative Code thresholds for free product recovery. And yeah, what, what do you do? Keep bailing or, or try something else to try to accelerate? May or may not be successful, but it's an effort to possibly move things forward quicker.
Is this similar to what they did at, or by the Kmart building or the Walmart building or they have to?
No. Those, those were different processes. Actually, one of those was bio remediation of the material on site, and the other was stripping of what was pumped out. So they were really different processes, and they were really expensive.
So this doesn't, this won't change, we still have to meet that, was it like .01 or .1 for consistent 12 months, correct?
Yeah.
This won't change that?
No, it doesn't change that. The Iowa Administrative Code requires that in order to consider no further action certification, that your free product recovery has to be below a tenth of a gallon per month for 12 months. Then for the next 12 months, it has to be monitored, and the depth of the free product in the test hole has to be below 2/100ths of a foot. And we're considerably over that, both of those thresholds right now. And that, so actually closure is a two-year process. One, monitoring the tenth of a foot, gallon, and one year monitoring 2/100ths of a foot.
And Randy, we're sure nothing is migrating to the site? I've been told nothing is mig, is migrating from another site. It is self-contained, the problem?
Based on the soil testing that had been done previously, of course, when the tanks were removed, there was some comprehensive soil contamination testing. And they limited or identified the contamination, the concentrated contamination at this one site. There's only one test well that's being currently baled, so that's where the contamination is. So yes, we believe there isn't anything further contaminating the site that's, that we are.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Randy? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the proposal of Seneca Companies for the free product recovery, high vacuum extraction for the alley block 10 original town abandoned tank site for $16,135.58.
So move.
Okay.
There's a motion in a second. Fleischer?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. The next item is the local planning and administrative assistance contract with Region 12. And Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, back in September of 2016, council entered into a contract with Region 12 to work and try to gather information to apply for a CBBG or Community Development Block grant for some housing rehabilitation in the community. It's quite a process to go through, and we were unable to apply for the grant in 2017 and 2018. So we are looking to continue the efforts this summer and really hit an area of town. We've kind of got an area identified. We're hoping we can get the resources we need in order to apply for this grant. We gather that information this summer and fall that we can apply for a grant in 2018. So what this contract is tonight is to extend the timeframe to work with Region 12 and that they will help us with the administrative side of things and gathering the information that we need.
No additional costs?
No.
Any other questions for Laura? Not, I'll need a motion to approve the attached resolution amending the local planning and administrative assistance contract with Region 12 for the environmental review and public interest survey for housing application.
So move. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Seaman?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. Our first report this evening is the Emerald Ash Borer. And Jack Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Emerald Ash Borer is a ash tree-killing insect who's introduced in Asia. There's been 57 counties in Iowa now that this has been found in, and Carroll was, Carroll County received the notification April 13th on the, in the west part of the county. So the Emerald Ash Borer is in our county now, so there are steps we need to do and things we need to be thinking about moving forward with, with the ash borer. Typically, I, my memo, I won't go over everything, but it outlines how you, how the tree starts dying off. It starts up on top of the upper crown. Usually, when the borer's there, it's two to four years before the tree usually dies. Landowners, they can, you know, proceed however they want to with their trees with that. We had, Mike had put this in a memo out to you on a weekly, on his weekly notice. We have 126 trees in the parks, 67 in our cemetery, 65 at the golf course, and 313,000 in the city right-of-way areas. And thanks to Scott Parcher, the other superintendents, Kerry Promise, they all went out and determined the trees and came up with those numbers. The numbers don't include if they're in a heavy wooded area in public, in our park system along the, um, Rolling Hills Park. We did not walk in the, in all those different trees trying to determine their ash trees along the sock trail, so those aren't accounted for. But generally, everything else was. Several years ago, we started putting money aside. For two years, we put $75,000 one year, and then 75 the next year. It has carried over. So right now, we have $150,000. I believe we maybe used a few thousand on a couple of the trees that were already at the point of needing to be taken out. And some of the research that I've listened to at some of the conferences, once the tree is 30% dead, that you can't save it. If you treat the tree, you're not going to be able to save it. It has died off enough that it will continue dying. Before it gets through, you know, the Carroll system or city, we're anticipating about 16 years for that process to happen. And then our recommendation is, we, we have so many, and Scott Parcher is here, and he can give you a little bit of history on some of the ash trees, but we have many of them now that are already damaged from other circumstances. Wind, ice storms, just the age of the trees. We have quite a few in the system that, you know, are going to be meeting the requirement of removal either way. So I'd bear a recommendation not to use any treatment on any of the trees in those areas that are listed above. I've attached a map where you can see where the counties are now, where the Emerald Ash Borer has been detected. And then this was off the Iowa State University Extension Outreach, just talks about the Emerald Ash Borer, gives you more information. So we attached that so you could see that information. And Scott or I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Have you guys started to treat any of the trees at all?
No.
No.
We, we probably won't unless directed otherwise.
Just go ahead and remove them all?
As, as they die off. And that, that's kind of been the plan.
Do you have some that are closed now?
Yes.
Do you think those, what you have, are actually infected or they just happen to be dying from something else? I mean, I'm.
Just happen to be dying.
Yeah, they're not, they're not actually, I mean, they might be infected. We wouldn't know it, but it's a little early.
We, we wouldn't know whether they were infected or not, but they've got other things in them. They've got other bores in them, flat-headed bores.
Okay.
And it's mainly, the storms have damaged them enough, so they're, they're wounded, so they're more susceptible to attack. So treating them, I think we have enough chemicals out there already, but you're not just killing the ash borer, you're killing other insects too.
Yeah.
And possibly other wildlife, birds and stuff like that. Our plan is to just keep planting. We average from 40 to 80 tree, new trees planted each year in the parks. So we just plant off the.
And those are what kinds, Scott?
Pardon?
What type of trees are we?
Well, we've tried to avoid as many maples as we can, but we're getting a lot of maple trees. And we try oaks, and sometimes the problem with oaks is you can't plant them in some parks because of the acorns later on. Then we, oh, there's sycamores, we plant some of those. And the new elms, new hybrid elms have shown.
So we've been a variety anyway, so we don't get.
Yeah.
If you happen to know the history of the, when we planted these ash trees, were you around? Couldn't have been around them?
Yeah, we took an ash tree down at the aqua center last year, and it was declining really bad. And I'm guessing that tree was about, oh, 80 years old. So when they reach 80 years old in an urban environment, they're pretty well done.
And most of these trees are all the same age, right? They were all planted?
No, no.
No, no.
No.
No, they're wide variety.
The ones in the city, though?
No.
Not at all? Okay.
No, they weren't all planted at the same time.
When was the last time we planted ash?
The last time I planted an ash was in two thousand and two.
Okay.
As soon as I heard the borer was wiping trees out, I quit planting ash.
Scott, I've got a couple of questions. Replacement ratio, are we going to try and replace as many as that were taken out per year?
We replace more than-
More than were taken out?
Each one tree out, I usually plant five or six in its place.
Okay. And of all the trees, just, this is a tough question to know, of all the trees, how much in our city, how many are ash trees? What percentage?
Well, percent, the percent in the parks is about nine percent.
Okay.
Which is very small.
Okay.
And cemetery, which is a little more, there's, I figure about twenty percent. But John has removed some of those already that have been damaged. But most of the mature ash trees that we do have have got a little bit of decline to them, or that they're wounded so bad that they need to take it out. But it may be eight, ten years before you have to remove it.
Hey, Jack, we've got a paragraph in here that homeowners at their own expense can treat the trees on their property if desired.
Yep.
I just want to make it perfectly clear to the citizens, if it's on their property, what they're going to consider their property, but in the right-of-way, that's still, we're going to remove it, right? They're not going to have the option, if it's in the right-of-way, in front of their house or whatever, to treat it, correct?
Well, each tree has to be assessed at that time, probably.
But if it's one that we determine it's in the right-of-way, though-
That we removed in right-of-ways and fast.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
What I want to do is I just want to make clear that a homeowner knows that if we come in, that's why we're coming in, if they're either-
Yeah.
They're going to have that option or not going to have that option to treat it, if they want to keep that tree.
Right.
So the answer is we'll remove it?
We'll remove it.
Okay.
Yep.
Had a little bit of resistance out there that we're not treating these, but I think you kind of answered it, you know, we're replacing more than what we're tearing or going to remove.
I would rather spend that money on new trees that are going to survive in the future rather than-
Yes.
Trying to fix something inevitably coming up.
I think that's something that just needed to be heard.
Sure.
Do you need any more comments? Our next report is the US 30 Grant Road Intersection Improvement, change order number two. And Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the construction, ongoing construction of the US 30 and Grant Road project, we encountered two items of work that needed to be done that were not in the contract. The first was the addition of four pair of pedestrian push buttons for the pedestrian crossings on the signals. The second was the relocation of an existing water main to avoid conflict with a new storm sewer. The pedestrian push button cost was proposed at eleven hundred dollars for the four. The relocation of the water main was proposed at twenty-four fifty-eight fifty. In addition, that's in addition to a fire hydrant relocation that was already in the contract, it was already bid. So the total proposed change order cost is thirty-five hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. And this proposed change order also adds two working days to the contract. This brings the total contract cost to one million four hundred fifty-seven thousand eight twenty-eight twenty-eight, and the total working days from one hundred fifteen original to one hundred eighteen currently. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend approval of the change order in the amount of thirty-five fifty-eight fifty.
Those crosswalk buttons, are that, will that throw the timing off of those again, or will it be able to reset?
No, those are, the pedestrian signals are programmed into the entire operation.
System of just that light at that crossing, or will it go across the whole Highway 30?
The whole system.
Okay.
No, there, it's programmed into that, and of course, pedestrian crossing is only on the green time on your cycle. So whichever direction you're crossing, you cross with the green crossing. So actually, the green is programmed into the entire system, coordinated through the system, and pedestrian crossing is just within that green time.
So the button doesn't interrupt the time anyway?
It doesn't.
So what's the benefit of having a button?
That's what else they can do.
The call for your crossing. I mean, if there's no call for the crossing, it won't show a pedestrian program.
Oh, the, it has the pedestrian light that says, oh, I got it now, okay.
You know, the ones we have now are, they're integrally programmed, there's no call for them.
They just look at, yeah.
They're just there all the time, whether there's a pedestrian there or not.
Gotcha.
And this will provide for calling for that crossing.
Now, in the future, are those, will these, those be programmable to interrupt that? And, you know, if we, if somewhere down the road, we decide to install lights that will allow for pedestrian crossing, will that work in conjunction with those to reset the whole system? If someone wants to go across right now, they can do it?
Yeah, it wouldn't be right now, but-
Yeah.
But yeah, it would make a call for it.
Yeah.
And under a system that is completely computer-integrated-
Right.
Then it would adjust the entire system as it goes through the cycle.
And those buttons would be compatible with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Randy? If not, I need a motion to approve the change to, change order number two to the US 30 Grant Road Intersection Improvement Project in the amount of three thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
I'll move.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Pack?
Yes.
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item on the reports is the Water Distribution Modeling and Evaluation Report. And Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier, DIO Department Natural Resources Water Supply Sanitary Survey had noted two items in the water distribution system for which they required a plan of action to address. Those two items included an area of lower water pressure and areas of lower chlorine residuals. The city contracted with JEO to perform a water distribution system model and evaluation, excuse me, which they have completed along with a technical memorandum. The report and memorandum are beyond fairly technical, but in summary, the report, the objective of the report was to develop that model, to model the system, under hydraulic conditions, and then explore alternative solutions to those, that low-pressure area and those areas of lower chlorine, or, and do that through a water age analysis. The conclusions for the pressure, system pressure, conclusion was obviously that the northwest part of town had lower pressures than the rest of the city. And that was compounded by extreme use conditions. The recommended improvements included, or do include, replacement of two hundred and fifty feet of eight-inch water main that's immediately outside of the water tower, so it's up at thirteen feet main. And then the second step, if that doesn't provide the satisfactory pressure increase, is to create a separate pressure zone in the northwest part of the city. The first recommendation, the eight-inch water main replacement with a sixteen-inch, is estimated to cost about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But the second, the alternative pressure zone price will range from nine hundred to about one point eight million. Wow. So there's quite a difference in recommendations, certainly the second being a more certain way to do it. And that large range is due to variations you can create within it. You can create a pressure zone using only a pump, or you can create a pressure zone using pump and storage, so new water tower in that area. So those are kind of the recommendations to address the pressure portion of this study. The water age conclusions were pretty much that water age is marginally tied to chlorine residual, but not as direct a tie as we originally expected. But the northeast part of town does consistently show a lower chlorine residual than much of the rest of the town. It also concluded that other factors, decay rates of chlorine, water chemistry, pipe biofilm, may all be contributing factors to this chlorine, reduced chlorine residual. The recommendations for the chlorine side of the report were first open a couple of, an existing valve on the north side of the high-service pump station, and that would send water up through the middle part of the city. And the result is anticipated to be higher chlorine residual in the tower at that point. Now, the recommendation also includes the caveat that we continue, of course, chlorine testing to verify that this is what's going to happen. The second recommendation is to install a hydrodynamic mixing system in the tower. There are indications, and it's probably in actuality, that the tower stratifies, that the last water in becomes the first water out. And so you can get chlorine decay in the upper levels of the tower. And the cost of that's about fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars for that recommendation. And then, of course, it's, further analysis would probably be recommended to try to refine this water age study, to try to pinpoint closer what may be contributing to the decreased water quality of the system. With all, with these recommendations, we would recommend that the report be accepted, and those recommendations would be turned around and turned into capital proposals for capital improvement in the water system.
Can you, can you do the pumps without doing the sixteen-inch water pipe change, or would you want to do the sixteen first to see if that doesn't work, then do the pumps?
Well, yes, I believe the priority schedule would be first, the sixteen, because in modeling, it indicates that by simple replace simple, replacement of two hundred and fifty foot of sixteen-inch water main will increase the pressure in that northwest part of town by five PSI. And that's about as all you can get out of it. The reason the pressure is lower in that part of town is it's higher in elevation. It's the highest part of town, other than where the tower is located. And then there are friction losses between the tower and that part of town. So, yeah, it's relatively inexpensive and certainly not an ongoing maintenance issue to replace that eight-inch with a sixteen-inch. You know, there's a capital expense, but not necessarily any annual expense after that. So replacement of that would be the first recommendation. And then, if there is still a desire to increase the pressure more, then you go into creating a separate pressure zone, which would certainly be effective, but it's also quite expensive to do.
Does this disrupt the streets in some way when we're doing this, when we're replacing this eight-inch pipe?
Yeah, probably just one location on Main Street, because this recommendation is only from the tower over to Main Street, two hundred and fifty feet.
So it stops right at Main's?
Yeah, I think on the west side of Main Street. So it crosses Main.
Randy, what's the age of that eight-inch?
The age of the eight-inch? It's probably, the newest it could be would be sixty-seven years. And the former water tower sits on the site just west of where the current tower sits. And I don't know if that means sort of the former tower, but the current tower is about sixty-seven years old.
So it could be provided a maintenance center to do it as well?
We don't know what the condition is. It hasn't had any breaks or anything, but sure, it would be.
And what's the timeframe to do this?
Well, none at this, I mean, no timeframe established.
Right.
Once it's proposed for capital improvement, you know, I would expect to budget, to fund, and-
Is something like next year into-
Possibly. That would be the earliest.
Earliest.
Yeah.
What fund are you thinking about taking it out of?
Water utility.
Okay. Has there ever been a study on how much larger our city has to be before we put in another water tower?
There has not been a study on that. There are requirements for water storage, the DNR, the DNR requirements for water storage. And I believe in general terms, that water storage requirement is at least your average daily use. Now, we, our, the city's average daily use is right around a million gallons, just a little bit under that. We have storage, effective storage of five hundred thousand in the tower and one point five million in the ground storage reservoir. So the ground storage reservoir becomes effective storage because it has generated backup to operate it, so we can supply during power outage. So technically, city would have to grow or use a lot more water in order to go to additional storage. And how fast that's going to grow, or the water use is going to grow, we don't know. Certainly, the downside of too much water storage is age. The water ages in the towers. So I don't know if you want to get, reach out and get more storage than you really need, because then you will begin to compound the age problem with the water. So there's, there's a lot of factors. It's nice to have a lot of elevated storage, but the water starts, would need other treatments probably in order to-
Where I was going with that is if we're close, you know, but we're nowhere near close, so-
Not necessarily.
Yeah, we're close to needing it, then we need to look at a water tower, but we're not. Okay.
Randy, if we get the optimal five percent increase in PSI, how close does that get us to where we need to be or want to be?
Well, there, that's, the need and the want is, are two different things. Certainly, most of us like to have water pressures between a minimum of fifty and maybe up to eighty PSI for residential usage. We have water pressures in that part of town that considerably lower than that. They don't violate the minimum requirements of the DNR. So that we're, you know, as far as need, you've addressed the need. The want, you're quite a ways from it. You're a lot of PSI from it. And constructing the sixteen-inch water main gets five PSI simply because it reduces the friction coming out of the tower. And so it's a, you know, it's money, it's a lot of money, but it produces a result that the best you can do, you know, without making tower changes or pressure, using pump for pressure area changes. And those are certainly expensive, and they're ongoing monthly costs for operation.
So is it possible that increase would be seen throughout the entire city, or is it just particular there?
There would be an increase throughout the city. Actually, that five PSI is, is during that peak usage, there's so much water flowing through that eight-inch pipe that the head losses are five PSI. And if you can reduce that, you know, with a sixteen-inch pipe, then it benefits every place that that water goes. And- place that that water goes, and then certainly the northwest part of town.
Any other questions for Randy? If not, a motion to accept the water distribution modeling and evaluation report and technical memorandum. So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, please. Yes.
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 Yes. Our final report this evening is the fireworks follow-up discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Your last meeting on May fourteenth, the council had a discussion on fireworks. And at that point, the council elected to really keep the current prohibition on the use of type one, type two consumer fireworks in place. Items such as like sparklers, worms would continue to be permitted, those novelty fireworks, but the consumer fireworks would still continue to be prohibited. One of the things council asked us to do was to look at making an ordinance amendment that would allow us to have vendors post a notice, require vendors to post a notice that fireworks in the city of Carroll was prohibited. We did look in that, and really, after review of Iowa Code three sixty-four point three three C, which is about the regulation of consumer merchandise in the state of Iowa, we do not believe that we could require such a notice. Additionally, this code section's kind of come in play, as a side note, not in the staff report, kind of challenging our transient merchant permit, which currently would allow only the sales of fireworks in tents for five days, and then required permitting fee. And so we believe even in that case, we're not able to restrict the length of time that fireworks can be sold, because that would be counter to what is permitted in state statute. So we would recommend against making any change, just so we don't run into state code issues. Now, staff does plan to reach out to vendors, remind them about the prohibition, request that they post such a notice. Now, if they do that or not, it's up to them. Additionally, we have begun outreach, including, including a notice in the May utility bill flyer. We also include a flyer in the June utility bill. And then we're also going to work with media to let them know about the prohibition, and hopefully get some word of mouth through our media outlets in Carroll. With that, I have no recommendation. We already talked about council procedures, I kind of messed that up. But anyhow, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has at this time.
So we can't post a notice? We can't require them to do that?
We can't require them to do it, but we'll certainly ask them to post such a notice. We'll be kind enough even to provide them the notice. Now, if they post or not, that'll be up to them.
Any other questions for Mike? If not, I need a motion to approve the resolution.
No, no, no motion.
Oh, oh, just, okay.
Counselor's right recommendation.
What's that?
Counselor's right recommendation.
Yeah. That was an errant recommending.
Got me all going here. All right. Our next item on the agenda is the vicious animal appeal hearing in Florida.
I will let somebody run the trial, some speaker's appeal hearing.
Yeah, I think Brad will present the evidence. I would just like to step the stage again. It's the duty of the council to act as the jury, so to speak. You will hear the evidence. I don't believe anybody has seen or heard of any of the evidence that would be presented, so it will be presented to you for the first time. Your determination at the end of receiving all of the evidence is simply to either affirm or reverse the police chief's determination on vicious. That would be your decision, either affirm it or reverse it.
Okay, just to clarify, affirming is obvious. If you reverse it, it's like nothing happened?
Right. Right. And again, as a reminder, under our code of ordinances, vicious animal is defined, and I think in this instance specifically, dog which was, which has attacked a human being or domestic animal one or more times without provocation and while at large. So that sets the stage or provides some instruction for council to proceed at this point.
I will start with some, just a little bit of background on what's going on, or the call that came in place. Sergeant Shrap did the investigation, I'll never get into more details. The owner of the dog, Ms. Koking, is sitting over here, and the victim of the dog, by Ms. Hanish, is also here for any questions that you may have. So the call came to us on May fourteenth, around six thirty PM, and it was for a female who had been bitten by a dog, excuse me, at the corner of Troy and Hyridge here in Carroll, northeast part of town. Sergeant Shrap arrived, did an investigation, she met with me, and at that point, we determined that, based off our code, we deemed the dog vicious. On the fifteenth of May, Sergeant Shrap provided Ms. Koking with that notice, the dog was vicious. And also on the fifteenth, Ms. Koking came to City Hall for the appeal, which brings us to the point we are here now. I do have a few handouts that I will provide to you. The first one is chapter fifty-six of the city code, or city ordinances, which is Dangerous and Vicious Animals Code. And also provide, on the next page will be Ms. Koking's residence, and also showing the intersection of Hyridge and Troy. And on the final page will be pictures of the dog wounded by itself. So I'll let Sergeant Shrap provide you with more detail.
Okay, we got called to the intersection of Hyridge and Troy for a female that had been attacked by an animal, by a dog. Upon my arrival, I met with Deb Hanish, who was running on the roadway on Hyridge, closer to Troy. She was running southbound, and as she got to that intersection of Hyridge and Troy, a dog from sixteen twenty-six Hyridge left the property there, crossed the road to where Deb was running, jumped up on her, knocked her to the ground, causing, or biting her left leg, and then causing bruising and road rash to her arms and extremities. From there, she did go to urgent care, she did receive stitches. I followed up with the vet clinic on the fifteenth, they advised that the dog was current on all of its rabies shots. Those were in effect until the, it appears, March of two thousand and twenty. I spoke again with the Hanishes, and she advised that she was still sore, still struggling with the bruising around her ribs, had to sleep in the recliner the night before due to the soreness. And then on the fifteenth, I reported back with Ms. Koking and advised her that we were going to deem that dog vicious. While I waited to give that letter to Ms. Koking when she was not home, I made contact with several neighbors, all of which said the dog is outside barking frequently, and it does lunge, but it's never actually been off the property to know what would have happened had it left the property in the future, or in other instances.
When you say outside, is it inside a fence, or outside?
It's on a, like a long lead, like a leash.
Okay.
And its collar had snapped, it was just broken right at the clasp.
How large a dog?
I would say fifty to sixty pounds.
So it was on the leash at this time, it lunged toward Deb, and the collar broke?
Yes. To my knowledge, it broke as it lunged, got off the collar, ran into the roadway where Deb was running.
Highlighted number four is their residence?
Correct. The one that is highlighted, that would be Ms. Koking's residence.
And where exactly did the bite take place, what part?
At that intersection with Troy. So across the street from the residence, right at that intersection.
To the public right of way.
Correct.
In the middle of the road, or am I getting this?
I believe it was more towards.
There's more sidewalk on the other side of the road?
No, she was running on the roadway.
How'd they get the dog to stop?
Ms. Koking's daughter went inside and got her, and they got the dog back in the house.
Actually, she pulled it off.
She. Okay.
So Deb, you were not able to, to get the dog off you yourself? Were you pinned to the ground?
When I was running, he grabbed my calf, and he just rolled me, because I was running, and I rolled on the ground, and so I wouldn't be able to get off, off the ground unless she came to my rescue.
Okay, thank you.
Deb, just to be clear, is there a reason you're running in the street, you saw the sidewalk?
There was a few other times that my husband and I walked that, and we walked on the sidewalk, and it would lunge, so I just thought, instead of aggravating the dog, I would just go on the street. And sometimes I'm on, I, not, I don't have a certain route I run. I like to stir it up, so it's not that I'm on that road all the time. But I went on the road knowing that it lunges towards the sidewalk, so I have to take the prevention of caution.
Deb, why don't you come on up? Thanks, JJ. Just kind of describe what had happened.
Just like JJ said, I was running that evening on that road, and it was all blurred, but basically, I didn't know what in the heck happened to attack me. But I was running, and there's two dogs on that road. Like we said, there's two dogs that I'm kind of cautious with, so I just went off the sidewalk and started running on the road, past those houses. And all of a sudden, he was on my leg before I knew it, he rolled me. Like I said, thankful that she was outside, because she pulled him off of me. And went to urgent care about quarter to seven, saw Dr. McQueen. When I was sitting in the waiting room, my ribs started really hurting really bad, and I had a hard time catching my breath. And my elbow was getting swollen, so they gave me ice pack right away before I could see the doctor. They did do X-rays on my ribs and my elbow, and they did stitches on my leg. He did bite me more than that puncture wound. I had two other bites, but it did not puncture my skin. So it caused a hematoma under my skin, which is still there, but they said in time it'll dissolve. It's underneath the skin, it's not in a vein, so there's no worry about if that does move, that it's not going to cause any blood clots or issues or anything like that. Just what came from the doctor this afternoon before I came here, got the two stitches removed. They recommended put warm heat pads on my ribs, and also on the hematoma on my leg. And they said if my ribs don't get any better, I can get it re-Xrayed, but it would just to confirm that if there is a fracture or crack there now, but there's really nothing else they can do, it's just basically time will heal them. I've been, like I said, slept on the recliner because the pain couldn't lay flat, and I've been on ibuprofen, living on ibuprofen for two weeks now. And it'll get better. I'm, I'm a runner, we're dog lovers ourselves, we have dogs ourselves, we have pets, I'm nothing against animals, but just a bad situation happened.
So you've been running since, or?
I can't run with my ribs.
Any other questions?
Hi, actually, I brought the actual collar. My, my dog is a barker. My dog weighs, I have the records of his rabies shots, he's actually forty-four pounds. He's not fifty to sixty pounds. He is an Australian shepherd, he's a red healer. They're low and fast. My dog I've had since he was ten weeks old, so I actually have pictures of him. He's very, very, actually, my neighbor, so he knows I'm very attached to this dog. I'd actually been waiting to move him to the backyard, because in the summer, it's more active out there, but with all the rain, and I have some flooding back there, so I had waited. I have letters from, he's involved in, pictures with Santa out of Pala. Pala has provided a letter that he is around children, he has never been a danger to them, he's also involved in our, our biking to work, if you'd like to see a letter from the Human Resources. There's the actual dog, there he is. I also have a letter from, my furnace and HVAC guy who comes into my home at all times when I'm not even around, and hangs out with Charlie while he does that, and he's written a letter. Charlie's almost always in the house, he doesn't tolerate the heat or anything, but I also, since this ordeal, we've participated every year in the doggy dip that Carroll provides. So he is around other humans and other dogs at all times that he does the dog, the doggy dip. I've actually seen people there. Since this whole ordeal, first of all, I am so sorry that this happened to you, and I, I'm, you know, I wish I could take it back, and I've contacted my insurance agent to pay for any medical bills. And I actually have my friend Jessica Fox is here, that has offered to pay to fence in my backyard at the cost of twenty-three hundred dollars out of her pocket. They have come to my house, and they have marked it out. I've taken JJ's advice that the dog is not outside unless he is supervised. He's only in the back of the house, he actually doesn't see anybody except at the front window, and yes, he barks. He barks when he sees anybody. But he's, I've had him for almost seven years, he's never, you know, attacked anybody, he's around children all the time. I have nieces that are three and four years old. And I just, you know, here's the estimate from Rose Family Construction, and they've actually marked out my yard to start as soon as, if I get to keep him, they will have it up as soon as that. And here's, he's on a pretty thick collar, but here's this collar that actually broke the, off of it.
So you're not, your backyard isn't fenced in now?
No, it's not now. I mean, I, I couldn't afford the cost of it, so, but I'd always put him in the back during the summertime, because there's more room back there. And that's when my friend Jessica Fox said that she would pay the cost of the fence in order for me to keep my dog. You've actually been by my house, you, my dog barks at the window. You know, he's no longer in the front. He's not loose, he's on a, under a fifty-pound chain, it's supposed to be that. He's actually wears two collars now.
Is this the first time you had him in the front yard?
No, I, in the winter I do, because the backyard just fills up so much with snow. My neighbors to the south of me have given me permission to anchor up off their fence, you know, so it would cut, cut any cost. The actual fence is fifty-nine feet wide by forty feet long, so, I mean, it doesn't cover my whole backyard. But Matt and Jenna Brown has said, as soon as I had the money available to put a fence up, it would be a double-gated fence, it'll be locked, the only access would be towards the back for the large mowers to come into my yard. But, I mean, he's been around my neighbor's grandkids. He's out, you know, I take him to the grocery store, sits in the car. Yeah, I mean, he's, he's one of our kids. I mean, it's been heartbreaking for me and my daughter to take stuff that could have happened to him, because we've had him for so long, he's a rescue. And I'm so sorry that this had, happened to you, and, I mean, I've never thought something like that would happen. I do- I do, I apologize. And he will be into the backyard, you won't, you'll see him in the window, I'm sure, but there's no way he'll be able to come up towards the front and in the winter he'll still be in the back. I've got a slab of cement back there and my family has offered to help me make it even bigger slabs so that I can be in the back with him. But I contacted my insurance guy that, I texted him that night and I contacted him that morning. I actually wanted to contact Deb the very next day to ask how she was and to apologize, but I, I had no way to contact her. You know, I've, I've offered to pay for anything and, you know, and what I could do for her. I just, I, I don't want to lose my dog. You know, I know we did wrong. It's not going to happen again, he's in the back, you know, if I have to shock him, you know, he used to wear a shock collar, but, you know, I know barking is very annoying and, you know, I know that. I'm actually just used to it, you know, I just like having a kid. They said they will start the fence as soon as, I mean, it's marked out, they're waiting for, they're coming to mark the lines. And it's Jessica Fox who has offered to pay for it full expense.
Brad, have we ever had any other cases like this where they've offered to do anything like a fence or anything?
We've had other vicious dog cases, but no one has come up with a plan per se. Next to me, Amy, early last week, I think.
It was on a Friday of the week that it happened and I pretty much had my plan all.
And no one has ever come to me before with anything in hand or with ideas or any options?
Nothing, nothing like that.
No, and I did say, I'd asked to call Deb, but, you know, I knew, you know, that's when I found out the, you know, how bad it was.
And just so I understand, we just had to make the determination whether it was vicious or not?
No, the determination has already been made.
Okay, we just have to.
So, council just, yeah, just affers it or reverses the decision?
I think we need to be consistent in how we apply the ordinance and we've seen other pictures in previous situations that were bad, not as bad as this. And I think the other people that were unhappy with our decision, you know, said they, they would make sure this will never happen again. They may not have had concrete decision, concrete solutions, you know, to this extent, but they all had solutions. Oh, well, you know, the one collar broke, you know, we'll get a better collar, we'll do this, we'll do that. And Deb is barely tall, I'm thinking what if this would have been a child? And what would have happened to the child? I, I, we take our decisions very seriously, I respect what you're saying, but to me, the , we have to be consistent. And I believe if the police have deemed that this is a vicious animal, I, I'm going to make the motion to affirm what the police have determined based on thinking about the totality of the other situations and applying this fairly and, and not being arbitrary. I think this is a bad situation and one of the worsts we've seen. So, I, I will make that motion to affirm.
I'll second.
There is a motion in the second? Pat?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
You will receive a letter, Amy, in three days. Three days. Okay?
I would like to make one comment though. I think of four cases we've had, five cases. This is the second one, it's been a collar like this. If there's any way to get the word out to people, if they've got the quick release collars, they're convenient, but this has been what's kind of been the instigator.
That's a good point, yeah.
It's a good way to protect their dogs if they get better collars.
You can appeal, Amy. There, there is still an appeal process, so it's not over yet for you. Okay? Thank you. I trust everyone's read the committee reports and monthly activity reports. I have no comments this evening, any comments from the city council? If not, any from the city manager? Not, I will need a motion to adjourn. A motion to adjourn. Adjourn. Second.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.